All right, we should be live now with Mary Widener, one of the candidates for Celine City Council, the fifth of the six that we've talked to. Mary, let's start, first of all, nice to see you here. We've already talked a little bit beforehand, so seems kind of fake to say it out, but anyway. Good to have you here, good to finally talk to you about this. Before we get into the politics of any of this stuff, let's talk a little bit about you and where you're from. I think you just told me you were from Davison.
Yep, I'm, I've actually lived in Michigan my whole life. So I'm a Michigander. And I was born in Whupir and raised in childhood in Davison. And raised by a single mother. And I have four other siblings besides myself, so five kids. And we all went to University of Michigan-Plint.
Yeah.
And we, after I graduated, my mother and I, we went and looked around the area of Washtenaw County primarily. And we were trying to find a location that we liked to settle down, basically. And we, we got to Celine and we just loved how welcoming it was. The people are friendly, it's a nice, quiet, small-town feel. And we loved it, we moved here. And then my sister moved here soon after. And then my brother and his wife moved here. So we all kind of went to Celine and we all love it, it's been...
How many of your five siblings live in Celine?
Two of them.
Okay, all right. So what did you go to school for at, U of M-Plint?
Healthcare Administration.
Healthcare Administration?
Yes, but I ended up in, I'm actually in informational sciences and technology. So I've been in that around a decade now and now I'm a business analyst, so...
You do royalties or something like that, right? What is that, what does that mean?
So pretty much, we sell standards and then we pay royalties to publishers.
Okay. When you say standards, what do you mean?
So things like ISO and...
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
It's a common one, everyone knows.
And you've been in Celine, what do you, do you remember what you read of Celine originally?
We just, we love the Celtic Festival, Milpon Park. We used to go there all the time and now it's in the farmgrounds. They moved it, but we were frequent goers of the Celtic Festival and...
I thought the Celtic Festival in Milpon Park was a great event. The parking was terrible, but everything just felt...
Yeah, the parking was a little bit, and then if you walk there from outside and go down that hill and up that hill, it's a bit of a...
Yeah, it was a good...
It's a good workout.
Yeah. It was, at the end of a long day climbing that hill was a, was a job well done.
Yeah.
Do you still go to the one at...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
This year, I actually, I missed the event, but I went and I cleaned up afterwards.
Oh, still volunteer?
Yeah, I volunteer, I try to volunteer at most events if I can. I missed the Summer Fest this year.
Yeah?
I was down and out with a bug, but I did help clean up at Jazz Fest.
Uh-huh.
And...
Did you go to Jazz Fest at all, or did you just go?
No, I missed that one as well, I had previous obligations.
But you're still going to help out, that's good.
Yeah, I always try to help out, I, I like keeping Celine clean. It's nice for everyone who walks their dogs, who goes out and spends time with their family. It's just nice to have no trash around and just seeing things. And it also helps the people who are cleaning up afterwards, who've been there all day and, you know, they're tired and they need a helping hand.
You and your wife have dogs that you like to take care of?
So my wife has a cat, she's 12 years old.
Oh, a cat, okay, yeah.
And I have dogs.
Okay.
And we just adopted the one dog from, they're here on Humane Society, Huron Valley. And so her name is Flower and she's getting used to our house, so...
Yeah.
Proto I've had since 2021, and he was an adoptee from Texas. They're both, at least, part Shih Tzu, so...
Well, as far as you know, if you had to put money on it, if they could tell you, what would they tell you their favorite park in Celine is? Or do you guys, do you take them to the parks?
Well, I do take them to the parks.
Yeah.
I haven't taken Flower to many of them, I've taken Proto to a few of them. He would probably avoid every single one with water, he's hydrophobic.
Yep.
Yeah, he runs from water, so I took, took him to Curtis because I thought it'd be great to see the river and everything. And I was excited about it, he looked at it like, oh my god, who put this much water in one place?
Yes.
But he, he enjoyed sniffing around, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they like going around Brecken Park a lot.
My, my dog was originally opposed to all water, but his older brother, not really, not really brother, was a lab and eventually the lab got her, got her into the water. And once we moved to Celine, we started going to Milpon Park, that little stream with the, by the Bowley Bridge. That, that instantly goes in that, yeah. So let's, let's talk a little bit about the, what do you do in your, in your free time when you're not working or volunteering?
A few things, so I do volunteer at the library, I've started getting into that. Right now, I'm not a permanent volunteer, where I go in weekly. I, I'm one of the subs, so I work at the books, bookshop or the corner bookstore. And I help out selling books, obviously. I haven't trained in anything else, yeah, I'm excited to, I kind of want to stock books, but that's for later. But in my spare time, I do, I do, I volunteer at quite a few places. I work with Huron Humane Society.
Okay.
Huron Valley Humane Society on updating their events around websites. And I...
I got the sense, talking to you one time, now we haven't talked very often, but about one time there was a closed session, I think, and we all talked for a while. And I got the sense that you liked a lot of TV shows and movies too.
Oh, yeah, I do like watching TV shows and movies.
What's your, what's the best TV show, if you have a go-to that you go back to and watch it five or 10 times?
I gotta be honest, Bob's Burgers.
Bob's Burgers, I don't even think I know that one.
I love that show, it's, it's a good family show, it's a comedy and it's cartoon.
Okay. Where's it, where's it originate? Is it an English thing, is it on Comedy Central or...
Yeah, it's, I think it's originally Fox.
Okay.
Not 100% on that, but it, it's on Hulu right now. They have all the seasons up, they have a lot of seasons of it. But I've watched it for a long time and when I want to just relax, I put it on. It's a really funny show. It reminds me of my childhood, so I like it.
Sure. So let's talk about the government here, Celine City Government, and why do you want to get involved? Let's start first with, why you want, what's motivated you to get involved in city government?
So originally, I, when we moved to the area, I wanted to get involved in things. And I started out getting involved in things like the rain garden program, Washtenaw County. They had a, it was actually, I think, the first few years that they did it, I did the program for Master Rain Gardener. And then it got me into pollinator gardens. And after that, I started getting involved in more things around the area with animals and environmental stuff. And that led me to eventually applying to be on the, one of the commissions. And I ended up on parks, which is fantastic because I love parks. And I, I love everything nature and wildlife, but, so I, that was the start of it. But a lot of the things I see around the area that I just want to help out with, I feel like if we have more people, one of the things I really wish would happen would be more communication with the city and the citizens. That's more clear and frequent. I noticed whenever we had something new in being built around town, only a few people were notified. And there's usually just, they do a radius of people who get the notification, who live near whatever's being built. But to me, that's not quite enough because, for instance, like Ann Arbor-Celine, everyone's using that, that exit to town. And that's a really busy road, so it seems like to me that everyone in town should be notified when things are being built that would affect traffic in any way. And it's a safety thing too. I mean, you have work done on roads around Michigan and they put up signs for a good month or two around that road saying this is going to be worked on at this and this time. I, I feel like we need more information from the city about what's changing around us.
Well, if you get elected, let them know the Celine Post is available to them to use for whatever notifications they want. Seven days a week.
Yeah, and I've actually used the Celine Post for event notifications, so...
So what are some of the, what are some of the issues now? I know, I know, I remember you talking about Milpon Dam.
Yes.
And then I also remember you talking about, I think the thing we're going to talk about tomorrow night, the development on the north side, I forget what they're calling it, but it's another Danny Berry development.
The Ann Arbor-Celine apartment complex, yes.
But so tell me, what are, what are the key issues as you see them that are really at the top of your mind right now? You never know what they're going to be, you get smacked in the head by some issue coming from the side.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's always developments and new issues coming up. And you really have to talk to everyone in the area about it. When, when they first announced that there would be a development in that area, I did go around my neighborhood and I talked with some of my neighbors, some of them were notified, some of them in the back of the neighborhood weren't. Which is very curious because everyone uses the exit of Harper and Tower to get off onto that road. And not necessarily everyone heard about it and it was kind of a shock that, oh, there's, there's going to be building there? I didn't even know and there's not many ways to get out of our neighborhood.
Right.
So I made sure everyone in the neighborhood at least knew it was going to happen. And that, that area, number one, there's, I think, around seven acres. However, two or three acres are considered wetlands, they can't be built on, they're protected. I think Danny Berry has worked with wetlands on the, he, I believe he did the construction, they're like ranch-style apartments right next to it. So he's worked with wetlands and everything, so I, I think that will be fine, they'll, they'll probably work with Eagle on that. However, there are some concerns, I believe there's 51 units planned for that, it's going to be three stories tall.
Yeah.
Which was a big concern for people who are looking out onto that. I mean, it's going to be pretty much a wall that you're going to see. And it's very close to the road because they don't have a whole lot of space to build on. I mean, five acres is very tight. And they plan on making them, I believe, two-car garages, but there's not much parking.
Right.
And...
They've kind of, they didn't put any parking on his other development, south of, on Monroe Street there.
Yeah, and it concerns me quite a bit because, number one, with safety, I mean, you have, if there's a fire that they need to get to that area, they need to be able to, number one, if they have tall units, they need to be able to get to the top of the building. And I don't know that our fire department has access to ladders. I know they have, there might be two or three, but if those are in use...
Right.
I mean, those issues rise up because we don't have many tightly...
Three-story, yeah.
You know, it's a high-density build for that area and 51 units is, is a lot. And another thing is that there's, initially, they hadn't planned any sidewalks on Ann Arbor-Celine. And I did request that at one of the meetings. And I said, you need to have access for the public to cross there. I mean, you're going to have families who are walking to school.
Yeah.
And the connector is at Woodland. So, but there, there's segments further down the road that I'd also like to see sidewalks, like in front of one of the dentist's office, there is a missing sidewalk, so I'd like to see that connected so they can reach Woodland. Because right now, the only full-connected side is on, when you're going down Ann Arbor-Celine from downtown, is on the other side. So they'd have to cross the busy road just to get to that crossing. And, you know, another thing is that I'm a little bit concerned that, I know it's probably not something that people have considered, I know I haven't brought it up in any meetings yet, I, I was going to bring it up at the next one. But if we do remove the dam and we get any flooding of any sort, that area is in, or part of a floodplain. And if we keep getting the torrential downpours that we've been getting, whether it's due to climate change or not, those are going to increase and that's going to...
Where do you see the flooding, at Curtis Park and beyond?
Well, it's on that connector wetland, it's, it's kind of like a, it's going down that way where they have that area of water. So that's a potential for flooding. And they, they also have, they, the plan, if you look at it, a lot of the parking lot is facing the back of the lot. Well, with runoff and things like that, is that going to go into the wetland? When they do things like clearing the ice, putting down salt, and is that going to affect that wetland? So there's a lot of things that I think, I do like seeing more housing. I'd love if I had somewhere affordable housing instead of market value. But I do like seeing new families move in because I, I love seeing Celine grow. But I would really like if it was built in accordance to the surrounding area, that it fit in aesthetically, it fit in, you know, public safety-wise, it wasn't creating any concerns with fire, water. You know, it had easy access points. I mean, if you have a fire and they need to go in and they have very tight parking, I mean, what's going to happen? Is that going to create a hazard? And I, I don't want to see any future issues pop up from build that we do, kind of make more room for families.
I, I haven't studied the economics of the, of the development, but I always wonder if, would it be, would it be a feasible development with seven less units, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't really know what the answer is.
I think, you know, I think it would, it would definitely fit better. In that area, you'd get more parking available, you'd be able to actually have some green space. I think right now they have a, a bench planned, a green space.
Yeah.
I'd like to see more like picnic benches, maybe a grilling area for families. I mean, I think these things are important when you're trying to build a family area. You need to encourage, you know, community.
Sure. If I'm right, I think you were, you want, you want to keep the Milpon Dam, on the Milpon Dam issue, is that true?
Yes, and the reason being is because I do see our budget, I see how much we spend elsewhere. And I know from, we did a tour of the other parks in the county, I see how much it costs to rehabilitate a park. Especially when you're moving land, when you're moving structures, when you're trying to do new paths, you're trying to level out where things have changed. I know how long it takes because you have to wait for the mud and everything to settle to... And I also know that our, our particular river is more of an outlet for other water bodies. It's not like Dexter's River where it is connected to an actual basin. So they actually have a, kind of a rapid flow of water.
Sure.
I do worry about the increase of things like mosquitoes, it's changing the environment of that area when water kind of stagnates right there. There's a lot of things with the dam that I believe that if we just rehabilitated the dam, it not only would be better for us economically, but it would be, and financially, it would be better for us in the future because we'd be able to, when we have those torrential downpours, we'd be able to lessen the flooding in areas. And one thing about our dam, we do have a, we're not at risk for any deaths or, we're not a high-risk dam area.
I wouldn't think so, right.
But it would affect things like roads, it would affect things like housing, it might destroy some property if it severely flooded. So it would just help us get a little bit of a head start. I know there's places in Australia that are actually putting up dams because of the change in weather.
They want to be able to control the, control the flood.
They want to be able to control, at least, even if it overflows, it's better than having no dam and not being able to control it at all. So I think both financially and for the future, it's a better thing to have it than to not have it.
Any other issues that you want to bring up?
Well, there are a few. I would like to see more crosswalks in the city that have blinking lights.
Yeah, crosswalks without lights.
We really need more, and especially when you're coming from Ann Arbor to, down Ann Arbor-Celine and that crossing right there, there's a lot of families in the area. And there's more neighborhoods now and we, we have that change from 50 to 35 to 25. And I think a lot of people from out of town don't really know that and they go really fast until they get downtown and they see that 25 and...
When I see a police car parked along the side, that reminds me, that reminds me, okay, what's the speed limit, what am I doing?
They do like to park right where they're going to put that new complex.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I notice that's a good spot, but then I'd like to see more attention to our parks. I know there's a lot of maintenance things that we need to do with our parks, as far as the rec center is involved.
Yeah, what is your take on the rec center?
I wish we had a model of, at least financially for it, like we have the library.
So district?
Where everyone, yeah, where everyone pays...
Is the library's district completely the same as the school district or is it somewhat different?
I think it's a little bit different, it might be completely, there's a little bit of a difference in there because they've got different programs, I think, with the school.
The idea of three or four municipalities finding it instead of one, obviously...
Because I really do think that combining it with the parks
Yes.
is detrimental to our parks because we can't afford to do the things with the parks that we would if we didn't have the rec center attached. But the rec center is its own thing and I think it's a valuable asset to the city. It brings people in, it keeps people healthy, it allows you to do all these different activities, it's a publicly accessible pool. And I do believe that it is a good resource, I just think that our funding currently for it isn't sufficient to what it needs. And having them combined is detrimental to both.
Right, it's, it's like, if, if you go to Rochester, I think it's Rochester, Avon, maybe Rochester Hills, a bunch of communities have joined together, formed their parks and rec. It kind of maintains all the parks, it plans for all the parks and rec centers that they have in those communities as well. And they have their own village. So you figure out what that optimum level is and may, and maybe it would be, the rec center would serve everybody or maybe they'd shutter the rec center anyway and build a rec center that fit today's needs. So who knows?
Because our community is increasing in size and we are getting more, you know, people from outside realizing they love Celine, so they want to come here.
But the city of Celine's population has been stuck at 95 to 98, 100 for 15 years or 10 years. And, and, but the other ones...
It rose up a little bit with every build, but...
The other ones are, well, they're going up as the families are getting smaller. And so it's a, it's a trade-off. And who knows, maybe we'll get a nice big bunch of families come in and push us over 10,000. But even still, Celine Township is going to grow, Lowdy Township is going to grow, Pittsfield, York. All these, all these townships are bringing families to the neighborhood, you know? And that's 30,000 people instead of 10,000 people.
Yeah. And another thing is, I really want to see more accessibility to, I, I know there's a thing with the fire department right now that they're trying to figure out how they're going to fund. Because we are, I did notice our ISO numbers for the fire department weren't, weren't great. I mean, it goes from a scale of 1 to 10, with 1 being the best, and we're at a 9 for really far away distances and that's really not great, so...
I've, well, I still lived in Ann Arbor at the time and I got a, I saw a fire call for a fire out on Dybly Road. I put it in my Google Maps and I was driving, I was like, this, this is like a half hour away from my house. Wasn't that far from Celine, but still, a long way to go.
Yeah, and I would...
That's something they're going to try to deal with.
Yeah, and I would love to see a different type of financing for the fire department so they're able to grow with our needs. Because I think it's like, they want 15 firefighters per big fire when they have one.
I forget what the total number is, but...
And our fire department, I mean, that's a lot to require, I don't know if we'll have to...
Well, they always, they'll always use mutual aid with a big fire, I would think. But the, already the number of firefighters, I think I just saw, four were hired. I don't know, some have gone, fallen off over the years too, but already they've, they've done some work in the fire department so that more people can live there and work at the same time.
I do like that.
But I think, like Lowdy Township is far, but I'm, I'm hearing the preference might be to start with an expansion in York Township instead of Lowdy. Geographically, that doesn't make much sense to me, but I think politically, the York Township is, has been more friendly with the fire department. So they might want to go that way first just to get something done.
Yeah, just to improve our numbers at least a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
I know there's, I, I've looked up different fire departments all over the US and I know there's different things that we could be doing. I really don't think that it, the way to go would be hiring a service of any sort because I think that service, their duty would be to their stakeholders. And right now, the fire department, we are their priority as a community. They answer basically to our requests. So I don't think that, ideally, it wouldn't be a service we rented out, maybe for the littler duties that they have to do around town. I can see that, maybe lessening the burden a little bit. But then you have to account for what if the mobilization of these people coming in costs you just as much as if people went and did it? So you'd have to do a really thorough...
So with the service, are you talking about some, a little bit of privatization, basically?
Yeah, which again, I, I'm not for, I would prefer if we kept it
Sure.
basically in the city and in our townships.
One of the issues, I think, is the amount of, I mean, the share of calls that are medical calls, it's, it's, it's pretty high.
It's very high.
And in, in the city of Celine, it's even higher because we have a lot of, we have Linden Square, old, older folks home and then the same thing over here on, at Brecken Village. Then even EHM on Mill Street over there, or just off Mill Street. So that's, those, those places take a pretty high share of what our fire department does.
I mean, and it's, it's fantastic to have those resources. I wish we were able to improve our response times and also address further out, you know?
Right.
Because really, accessibility to those type of services and as we expand, we need to make sure everyone's covered. And expansion inside the city is not going to help us with our response times as we, you know, try to move outwards too. So we almost have to consider, you know, is there another option? Is there, you know, I know a city in, I believe it's in New Jersey, they actually rent out shop vacs for people to rent.
Right.
Different tools that the firehouse could provide and that's actually a service they provide and it brings in income. So things like that, I think we could look into maybe to increase what we're bringing in. I don't know if it would resolve a lot of our money issue, but I think it would, it would help, you know?
Sure.
There's these supplemental, supplemental things that you can do in order to offset some of the smaller expenses.
Yeah.
Because, you know, a lot of, what I worry about with the fire department is access to equipment and, you know, getting it to wherever it needs to be on time. And that in itself, I, I think we need to have our roads planned accordingly, that they have clear access to the building that they're addressing. And they need to be able to get through quickly, go there quickly.
So we're going to see some of the issues, there's a whole bunch of other issues I want to ask as, you know, time has kind of gone on since our first interview. I've been more and more curious about what council candidates think, but I want to be fair, I don't want to put you on the, on our grill here too much before we've done the same thing to everything, so I'll leave it there. One last question, why do you think voters should vote for you for city council?
I am very for building a Celine that is good for, that is supportive of... I am very for building a Celine that is good for, that is supportive of, of the community. That has communication, that's clear, frequent and transparent for everyone. I want to hear from the voters. I want to hear from, you know, neighbors. I want to hear from the people who aren't neighbors to me who are further out. I, I want to hear from everyone. And I want to be able to take those comments and put it into city council. Because I do feel sometimes when we have things announced and people come in. They might hear of it probably a few months or weeks after it's already into the project. And at that point, you can't really do anything. If it was at the beginning of the project, then they would be able to have input that might sway the bill. Or relocate something. I want to hear those comments prior. I, I want to be able to bring that in to city council, make sure we're well informed on how our citizens are thinking, how they're feeling. How they think Celine should be growing as a community. And, and all, I think it'd be better for future generations of Celine to have that input from everyone. And not just when someone happens to stumble over an issue and hear about it, you know. Because I think a lot of, of things that get built or get created in the town, people don't know about it. You know, and a lot of it goes kind of missed. And it's very sad that we don't have more communication that people can participate. So, and I believe that if I was elected on the city council, that I'd be passionate about getting those comments from people. I want to communicate with others and it might not always be a good comment that they have about a project, you know? I've heard a lot of, of comments.
Are you on Facebook?
I've seen a lot of, I am on Facebook. I'm on Facebook, Instagram and Blue Sky now. I, I'm not a frequent user of Instagram and Facebook, but I'm on there now.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. It was nice talking with you and we'll talk again, uh, I don't know, six weeks or so? Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.